The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking, First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Warren, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank, the difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
See the agenda says 2022 on it, it's 2023. I looked at everything 150 times, but I didn't get it yet. We need to have a recall? No, just change that to 2023. So glad to have everybody here tonight. Glad to have our newly sworn in city clerk, Ms. Janice Nelson. We're very happy to have her. And I also want to, before we call the roll, but I want to introduce Alderman member, city council member Latanza Atkins. Latanza, we are very happy to have you join the returning council members. Glad to have you with us representing board three. All right, call the roll.
Okay. Alderman Marshall, here. Alderman Frazier, here. Alderman Henderson, here. Alderman Tollfree?
First.
Alderman Mosley, here. And Alderman Atkins?
Here.
Okay, very good. We let the record show, we have a quorum and 100% attendance. First thing we need to take care of are the minutes of, there was two meetings in December, the regular meeting on December the 12th of 2022, and then there was a called meeting on December the 14th, primarily dealing with just a couple items in the budget. Council members, you've got copies of that. It's open for motion.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes on December the 12th, 2022, and also December the 14th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion, question, correction to either set of the minutes? If not, all those in favor for approval have been known by show of hand. I see six votes in favor. Any noes? Minutes or both sets of minutes are approved. All right, that brings us to the city clerk's report. And bear with the city clerk Nelson and myself, it's been a long time since I've done some of this, and she hadn't done it. So we're gonna just very briefly go over the statement of revenue and expenditures. Again, council members, you have copies of this in quite a bit of detail, and I've asked the city clerk just to go through and just give you, this is a year end report, not only for the month of December, but it's the entire year of 2022. And so I've asked her to go through the total expenditures by category in the general fund and street fund for 2022 for the year. And I'm doing this as much for the city council, but also for our public and folks that'll be watching this and getting reports so they can kind of know what's going on. Madam clerk, you are recognized to go over it.
Okay, so on page three, the total expenses for the year, expenditures was $3,876,827.2. Then for administration, expenses total were $414,766.19. And law enforcement, total expenses were $1,545,000, wow, excuse me, $1,545,153.96. For the fire, total expenses were $433,146.21. For sanitation, it was $971,571.72. And building codes was $25,633.59. District court expenses were $96,165.49. The municipal building was $55,609.34. And the recreation expenses were $176,686.63. The cultural center was $20,039.28. The armory neighborhood center was $9,757.32. The shooting range was $61,531.41. The senior citizen center was $6,682.3. And other revenue or other expenses was $18,983.3. The airport was $23,347.26. The economic development was $17,753.56. And that's it.
See, we have the street.
Yeah, we got the street.
Wherever that is.
It's on the very.
Mr. Murray.
Yeah, it's very civilized. It was $505,983.13.
Okay. Obviously, council members, you've got all the revenues and it's a lot of information there, but we present that to you, and I entertain a motion for.
I move that the financial statement of revenues and expenditures be approved as presented by the city clerk.
Sir. Motion's made and seconded. Is there any other question or discussion? We'll be glad, trying to answer any question you've got on anything. That again will show you the month of December, but then it will also show you a cumulative total for the entire year, and everybody understands, public understand, we operate on a January to December fiscal year, so that'd be your annual expenditures as well. Any question? All in favor by show of hand, please? I see six in favor and it opposed. So that's approved. Now, the city clerk will give you the city sales and use tax, county sales and use tax information there.
Okay, I put the county on top, so that's my mistake, but the county, the total was $742,658.84, which shows that it's up seven percent from last year. And then the city was $1,087,696.4, which shows to be up nine percent from last year.
That's just for information, but it's showing you how our sales tax revenue, which we get a percentage of the county sales tax and then the city sales tax in total. And you can see those numbers remain up. Been, was a very good year in 2022, and I think it's probably been mentioned to y'all before, but probably one of the reasons at least, is the fact that we're getting sales tax on a lot of internet sales and things like that now that we didn't used to get. So that's beneficial, and I think they got their cash balance sheet too, which correct?
Yes.
Shows all your cash balances, that's kind of part of your overall financial report.
But Mr. Murray, it also shows that on this year, on 2022, on December, on county and city, we was both down.
Down a some, yes, that is correct. Yeah, I was just looking at the total, total numbers on the year, you're correct. And then you got the court information.
Yes.
Court information's there, it's just showing you again what's income and so forth on, that's the district court. Anybody got any questions on any of the financial reports? Know it's a lot of information, but it's important that you keep up with this and look at it every month. As somebody told me once, no money, nothing you can do. So we gotta have, we gotta keep up with our finances very carefully. All right, item six is the mayor's report. Actually, I've just got a couple comments I wanted to make for the first meeting, and it's not gonna take long, I'm not gonna make a long speech or anything like that, but again, I did want to welcome the council, all of you are here for a two-year term, and glad to have, of course, five of you are returning, and again, council member Atkins has joined us, we're glad to have her. I don't think I have to tell the council, we got a lot of issues to deal with, a lot of things to work on, and we are, we're going to do it, and we're going to do it together. And I think that is absolutely important, we're gonna be using our committee system now that we got everybody on board and sworn in, and all the committees have been assigned, which you did, of course, in December, but we will get our committees functioning, and we want to work with you from the mayor's office very closely, do whatever it is, get any information you need, and to make sure we get some things done for the people of Warren, that means all three wards, and that we just, we move forward and try to move forward in a progressive manner. So I just wanted to make those comments to you. There's a couple things, one thing in particular that has come up since the agenda meeting, when we set the agenda, does not require any action, when we get to the building officials' report, he's going to tell you about that, concerns the downtown area and some of the buildings here, I know a lot of people are wondering what's going on there, and we will give you a little bit more of an update when we get to that. So appreciate it. I think the next thing we gotta do is approve the Chamber of Commerce lease, and again, just for everybody's information, and a lot of people may or may not know this, it's listening to us, but the Chamber of Commerce, of course, Bradley County Chamber of Commerce, is located in the Warren Municipal Building, always has been for many, many years. The Chamber is not a city agency, it is not a governmental body, never has been, but it was put here because somewhere way back in the early 1930s, the gentleman that gave the land for this building that we're sitting in today, he gave the land to the city to build the municipal building, and he put some type of caveat in the agreement, as we understand it, although it's kind of hard to find any records on some of it, that the Chamber of Commerce would always have an office, as long as this building's here, the city operates here. Well, that went on for, I think, since about 1932, to give y'all an idea of how long I'm talking about. And then finally, the, I think the legislative auditors who come in, look at us every year, said, well, that's all fine and good, but you gotta have an agreement with the Chamber to let them have that office in here. Now, we're not charging them money or anything like that, they're, they're separate operation and have their own expenses, and we do have some contractual agreements with them, one right now, but that's the purpose of this, so I'm simply gonna ask for a motion to approve the lease that has to be year by year.
I make the motion, I move that we approve the lease for the Chamber of Commerce for the year 2023.
Second.
And it's seconded. Now, again, council members all know that, but I just want everybody else to understand what we're doing. Is there any question on the motion? Is there? Alderman Tollfree.
Is there any legal reason why we just can't do a long-term lease to the Chamber on this?
I don't know the answer to that right off.
Because you know how temperatures change, and we're just on a two-year term, you never know when somebody's gonna come in and not quite understand it.
Well, we might could look into that, Alderman Tollfree. Now, a lot of the contracts that we are authorized to enter have to be on an annual basis, so that may be too, I just, but I'll inquire and at least see if that's a possibility.
Thank you.
Any other question, comment? All in favor, show of hands? I see six in favor, any opposed? All right, that takes care of that. Now, we've got four resolutions to act on tonight, all honoring individuals that have served our community in each case for a number of years and a long time. I'm gonna recognize Alderman Marshall, first of all, to bring up Resolution A673 that would honor the late Robert Anderson. Alderman Marshall, you're recognized to read the resolution, make any comments.
Okay. Resolution number A673 for the city of Warren, a resolution honoring Robert Louis Anderson. Whereas Robert Anderson was loved by many and a valued citizen of Warren, Arkansas, and whereas Robert was a wonderful father to his beloved wife Carolyn Anderson, who preceded him in death, two sons Ted McDaniel and Tiffany, and Terry Anderson, and one stepson Alvin Campbell. He cherished his ten granddaughters and eleven great-grandchildren. And whereas Robert attended Brantley County High School, he began his career at age seven working at the Correl as a dishwasher. He stood on a box because he was too short to reach the sink. Mr. Anderson also worked for Southeast Arkansas Human Development Center where he retired. And whereas Robert began his Christian journey, his Christian church journey, as a member of Union Hill Missionary Baptist Church, under the leadership of W.L. Strickland. He later gained his life to Christ as a member of Powerhouse Church of God in Christ, under the leadership of Edra Matheny. Years later, he joined and became a lifetime member of South Warren, known as Holy Delivery Church of God in Christ, under the leadership of Reverend James Thomas. Mr. Anderson served as a deacon under the leadership of Pastor Terry Correll until his passing. And whereas Mr. Anderson ran his own restaurant known as Rob's Place for many years. He was well-known for his famous barbecue, his hamburgers, and lemon icebox pie. He was known as Warren's famous cook. And whereas Robert was solely be missed by all, now therefore be resolved by the city of Warren that Robert Louis Anderson is hereby honored for lifelong devotion to his family and fellow citizens.
You put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we do a resolution, number A67 for Robert Anderson.
A673.
A673, second.
And seconded by Alderman Henderson. Any question or discussion?
Got to come in.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes it's overlooked. I guess going back to days when Robert first started, segregation was rampant in the state of Arkansas. So many times in the restaurants, including Wayne, where he worked at, black people could not eat. And Robert cannot serve as that guidance, I guess, for at least wise kids my age to start going to those restaurants and eating. And it made a big difference to have somebody like him in the community doing times like that. And also, what he really was known for was his barbecue sauce. Could I get that recipe?
Nobody has.
Nobody has? Okay. And as many times that I have cooked for the youth in the city, and I would always go and ask him for the barbecue sauce and ask him for the recipe. He told me he'd make as much as I want, but he never would give me the recipe. And I think over the times, we overlooked the contribution that older people like him had through the times of war to the youth of the city. Too many times, we have too many complaints now of people that don't want food with kids, or we always saying the kids have nowhere to go. And he would talk to us a little sternly sometimes, but he was always a loving heart, and we never went home. And I just like to thank the city council for doing that.
Anybody else want to make any brief comment? I think we all knew Robert, and I was just, from the administration standpoint, he was a good friend of mine, somebody I knew for many years, and a tremendous citizen of this community. You really do. All right. Not hearing any other comment, all those council members in favor of adopting of Resolution A673, show of hands, please. I see six in favor. Would his family or any of his friends that are here, y'all would just come up and get a picture made? Any council member wants to get with him? You're welcome to. Alderman Marshall, you certainly, and we will get y'all an official resolution, okay, once it's all signed and everything. I'm gonna step down here and get in this.
I'm gonna take the mic, please.
Okay.
Get it here.
Y'all get in there, squeeze in as best you can.
Okay.
Thank you. Get us all, to make sure we got us, everybody can be seen. If I'm taking up too much room, I get out of the way, so.
His door keeps scooting around.
All right. Ready? Three, two, one.
Got it? Rob, you got what you need?
I've got it, we're good.
All right. Thank y'all so much. We, we, we. Thank y'all, all of you. Appreciate it. Brandon, you don't want to cross that river? You don't want to. All right. All right, Alderman Henderson, I think you're gonna take these next three since you submitted all of them. That's A674, would be somebody I think everybody here knows as well, the honorable Helen Boswell, retired city clerk. Alderman Henderson, you're recognized.
Resolution number A674, a resolution honoring city clerk Helen Boswell. Whereas Mrs. Boswell is one of Warren's finest citizens, and whereas Mrs. Boswell is a wonderful mother of two sons, Tyrene Boswell and Corey Boswell, and six grandchildren whom she loved dearly. And whereas Mrs. Boswell was born and raised in Warren, she is a faithful member of Church of Christ. Mrs. Boswell worked for Potlatch, which is now known as Potlatch Delta, for 30 years in sales, invoicing, accounts, payable, receivable, logging, payroll, and information systems. And whereas in 2005, Mrs. Boswell became the administrative assistant to the mayor for 14 years. In June 2017, she was selected by the city council to fill the unexpired term of the former city clerk. In 2019, Mrs. Boswell was elected to be the first African-American female to serve as Warren's city clerk. Where she kept a correct journal of the financial proceedings of the city, she paid the city bills, collected privileged license fees, and recorded minutes for the city council, just to name a few. And whereas Mrs. Boswell has worked countless hours in her role and demonstrated a spirit of commitment to her job. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Warren, that city clerk Helen Boswell is hereby honored for her service and her resolution to be entered into the permanent records of the city of Warren, this said date of January 9th, 2023. I move the approval of Resolution A674.
Seconded. Seconded, Alderman Tollfree. Any comments or questions from anyone? Alderman Tollfree, I knew you was gonna have a comment.
Been around a long time, that's me. Well, first of all, I just wanted to make it plain, the sister Boswell was at the division, Southern Divisional Office.
Yes.
At Potlatch. It not only included Warren, it included all of the Potlatches in the Southern Division. And it was always a joy of mine to be able to go up to the, up on the hill, as they used to call it, and some kind of way I always used to find it through it because she was my cousin, she always had encouraging words for me. And I was always proud, and that encouraged me to go over into management later on in life, along with my friend and brother Zach, when I used to see him riding that white company car with that antenna on, he was just inspiration to make that move. And I guess that when our parents, our forefathers come across the county lines from Cleveland County to Warren, I can just always remember my parents and grandparents along with her. Grandparents and parents will always try to instill in us, first of all, to have character, be a good Christian, and always have quality and work in the work you do. And sometimes, I guess we throw that in to be the first black, but I would like just to say that she was one of the best. She led the city over from the pen and pad to the nowadays digital world, and through the pains that she took while handling one job to help guide us through the other job, and then vice versa when she took the other job, to be helping to guide things and always keep the city going. And sometimes I looked at her and she never complained once. And I would like to just say that that was a tribute to our forefathers to instilling us to have that kind of worth ethic, so we can be judged by the character, the content of our character, as well as the worth of the things that we do. And I would just say I'm super proud to be a kinfolk.
Anyone else? Any comment or just anything you want to say? I would just say amen, amen, and amen. Alderman Tollfree, been my pleasure to be around through these last number of years, and she has done a terrific job as fine a city clerk as has ever served this, this community. That's my idea. All right, all those in favor, we got a motion second to approve the resolution, all in favor, show of hands, and I see six in favor, none opposed. So I guess that takes care of that. You need to come up here and get your picture made now.
Come on, family. Church family.
Any friends, any family that want to come with?
She don't walk no more.
She retired. She's a girl.
I can see you back there. I'm watching you there, Mary, she's gonna make sure it hits y'all.
Get my slims on.
Three, two, one.
Y'all stay put, make sure, everybody?
Got it? Yes. You got it? You're my best.
You have done a tremendous job for this city, and I'm gonna.
Amen.
Okay, our next resolution is A675, and the recipient of this one's not here, but.
Yes, but I would like to make a motion that we approve Resolution A675, and that the resolution be read when our former mayor is here.
Okay.
That is my motion to approve it.
That's an appropriate motion. And it's seconded. Alderman Frazier. Okay, y'all, y'all have a copy of it, council member, so you can see it. We got a motion second, is there any discussion on this resolution? Okay, all in favor, show of hands? Okay, it's six in favor, any opposed? And we will, of course, make arrangements to get the former mayor to be here. We knew she was not gonna be able to be here tonight, but we want to go ahead and get that approved. And then the last one, I've been waiting on this one too, all those who want to talk about this, Helen and Roberts, but. Long time coming. Resolution A676.
The godfather of all. Resolution A676, a resolution honoring Zachary Burks Sr. Whereas Zachary Burks is loved and valued by the citizens of Warren, Arkansas. And whereas Alderman Burks is a wonderful father of his beloved sons, Zachary Burks II and Mark Burks, four loving grandchildren. And whereas Alderman Burks worked for Potlatch Delta's office, and until he retired. and until he retired in twenty, well, two thousand. Some of the positions he held were in personnel, safety management assistant, and was later promoted to division safety manager for the Southern Division of Potlatch. And whereas Alderman Burks left Potlatch for ten years to work in Stuttgart as safety manager. And whereas Alderman Burks is the, was the senior alderman of the city of Warren since nineteen seventy-eight. He is an amazing individual who has served our city with distinction, dedication, and strong leadership. And whereas Alderman Burks' service has been remarkable and inspiring. Thank you for your many years of excellent leadership, amazing guidance, and exceptional work as alderman for the city of Warren. Your presence at our city council meetings will, has been impeccable. And whereas Alderman Burks, you will be deeply missed by all. And we wish you the best in whatever the future holds for you. I move that resolution number A six, seven, six be adopted.
Seconded.
It's seconded. Alderman Burks, let's get the names right, are you the second?
I am the second.
You are the second, well, we're gonna, we're gonna correct that.
And Zach.
And Zach, and the young Zach is the third?
Then there's the fourth.
Okay. So there's another one coming, huh?
No, no.
He's already here.
Already here, but I mean, on his way, yeah.
But, but her two sons, Zachary Burks the third and then Mark, correct? Those are the two sons.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, we'll get that corrected on the, uh, here to make sure we had that right. Alright, I got a motion and a second that, uh, uh, I think she, I don't know, did you use the word? Elder, the more elder council member, did you use that? Senior, was.
Senior.
I like that godfather. Alright, council members, any discussion? Alderman Henderson, toll free? You have thirty seconds, go.
It's, it's not to be overlooked with his position with the safety thing, because there was a saying that went, if you worked at Potlatch, how you told, how people told you worked at Potlatch, because you didn't have all your fingers. And nowadays, as you see people coming out of Potlatch, they have all their fingers. And we have had very few fatalities, even though we have had some. And then I just want to appreciate Zach for his leadership in the community and his support to the Warren lumberjack, because he's always there. And then last but not least, Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity.
Alright, anybody else, one of, Alderman Henderson?
Yes, and, and the reason that I changed the terminology to was is because we're, you know, in a new year. And also Alderman Burks, the Arkansas Municipal League will be sending to you if you have not already received a resolution from the Municipal League as well.
Alderman Henderson.
I've known Mr. Bag my entire life, he is my sister's godfather. He is a father of my classmate, he's been like an extra dad, so to speak. So it is with humility to be able to sit in this spot and try to do a fraction of what you've done for the city.
Anybody else, council member, council members?
I'm just glad to see me and Sister Brother Zach were getting me on to work at Potlatch. He was the reason that I got to work at Potlatch for thirty years, and I appreciate him.
Come on there. Let, let me, uh, from the, from the mayor's chair, uh, I won't take a lot of time, but I gotta say something here. I have to. I've never had anybody be more supportive of me and work with me, and I didn't mean he agreed with me all the time, but he gave me his opinion and, and wisdom as to what needed to be done. I worked for the city when he first joined the city council, I was not the mayor, but I worked for the city. So I kinda rode the whole track with him on this thing and certainly watched him all those years. And nobody has ever cared more about not only their ward that they represented, and he was, by the way, last many years has been my, one of my council members in my ward along with Alderman Henderson, but he cared for the whole city. And he believed in doing what was right.
Yes.
And, and trying to move the city of Warren forward. And Zach, I just, just gotta say that, I appreciate you, you have, you have given service to this community and to the people of it, some of them have gone on. But, uh, even the people that are here today, you have, and I appreciate it very much. Alright, now, let's call for the vote. Council members, all those in favor of approval, show of hands. Okay, we were gonna throw anybody out that didn't vote for this one. That's six in favor, none opposed, so, uh, that is adopted. Alderman Burks, can you work up here and get your picture made? Anybody that wants to be with him on that? Council members, any, any of you want to? And I'm getting in this one too.
If I'm standing behind somebody.
Come on up here.
Everybody squeeze in good around him up there, you don't want him in there.
I want you in the middle. The man in the middle.
Alright, you all ready? Everybody look at camera.
Alright, three, two, one.
I like money. Zach, you stay put, cause I'm getting one. Go get one up here too. This man, this man gave me more advice than you can shake a stick at for a long time. And usually it was good.
Three, two, one.
You look, Rob, you got it? Everybody wanna recognize him for just a comment, I think he's earned it after many years. Here, here. The men.
Oh, you got it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Zach.
I got, I just wanna say a few words. Be quiet, Anthony.
Order in the court, please.
Be quiet. I, I just wanna say just a few, uh, things, and I looked at Rob, and when I started out, Rob was, phew, I don't know.
Just born, wasn't he?
Just born. And how time passed and how we've been blessed over the years. And to see Rob develop and doing the things now, it just made me proud. And I just wanna say as, as well as, uh, you guys probably don't remember this, man, these men, Emory Ackerman and Gary Howser, Roy Powell. Those individuals are very, very instrumental in guiding me and counseling me at Potlatch. And giving me the opportunity to go to the top, and I appreciate it. We had one of the best safety records in all of, uh, Potlatch. And I appreciate that, and it's a, it's a blessing. And I just wanna let y'all know, and I appreciate everybody here, uh, for coming and just sharing this with me. Thank you so much, and you guys talk, talk more.
Okay, thank you, everybody. I know this is a little bit, uh, maybe it took a little time, a little bit longer than usually we're in this far of the city council meetings, but these were important. Well, were important, these people be honored, each one of them, and, uh, appreciate that so much. Okay, I failed to mention this when we started the meeting, but if there's anybody that's wanting to address the city council, there's a sheet back there, is anybody signed in?
Mr. Smalling.
Okay, is there anybody else that was wanting to talk, just address the council tonight? Okay, I don't think any of the council members had anybody that they were gonna previously recognize. So with that, Alderman, Mr. Doctor, I'll get it right in a minute, Dr. Smalling, would you just mind stepping, step up here?
I did have a comment.
I'm sorry?
I did have a comment.
Okay, can I let him go and I'll come back to you, yes ma'am? Go ahead, Doctor.
Uh, I, I did hand out everybody, uh, all the council members should have gotten the invitation for our annual meeting again this year. Uh, we do have, uh, gonna have, we had Secretary of Commerce here last year, Mike Preston, and he's now moved on, I think, to energy, I think, but, uh, the new, uh, uh, Secretary of Commerce is supposed to be down, or if they have a new appointed AEDC director, uh, then he'll be the one that will be here. We have a commitment from the department to have one of those two people here. That's the reason this looks a little strange, I was hoping to have that finalized, but I didn't, but, uh, anyway, so, I know Alderman Mosley's been several times, and it's, uh, it is very informative evening to hear these people come down. Secretary of Commerce controls workforce services, along with AEDC, along with a whole lot of, a big part of government, so to get them to even find out where Warren is, it's important. So that's the reason we've invited them down. Also, I'd like to request, uh, that we have a meeting Economic Development, Community Economic Development Committee, we'd like to have a sit-down just to see what the future for the city of Warren, what they plan to do with economic development, to see if we can be of any assistance in that effort. So, uh, when they meet this year, I'd like to try to sit down with them and have a, a meeting, so. That's all the questions, the only thing I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Alderman Henderson?
I just wanted to, um, make mention of the fact of passing up Mrs. Sue Wagner. Was also, um, one of our leaders within this, uh, community, Wagner Nursing Home, and that the, uh, council consider a resolution, uh, in her honor. It's my understanding, uh, when I received the text yesterday, I, I couldn't believe it, but, uh, I understand the services are going to be on tomorrow.
Yes, I think there's even a visitation tonight, probably going on, uh, maybe right now, but.
Six day.
Okay. Uh, if it's, if it would be in order and permissible, we'll just try to put something together for next month and, uh, have something to, to honor her, because she certainly was a major, uh, influence in this community with the building of what's now Chapel Woods. And other things, she's involved in a lot of things.
Saying, uh, that she, I mean, she collected dollars and, um.
Almost thirty thousand.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And continued to pray for her family.
Hey, absolutely. Okay, is that all we got, Ms. Charlotte back there, or nobody else? So we, now, I'm gonna try to pick the pace up a little bit here, but if I get to going too fast, just holler at me and stop me and, you know, I don't, I don't wanna take any more time that's necessary to do our business, but I wanna take as much time as is necessary to do our business. That brings us to the administrative and standing committee reports, we're gonna start with the police chief, and he's right there, ready? Chief, you're recognized, and I think they have your report.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, good evening. I do believe everyone has a copy of our last report, and I should have a copy of our year's report, of the year twenty twenty-two. Proof is in the numbers.
It stands the same, huh?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And you can see one of our biggest issues right now is gonna be a personnel issue that we're not as embarrassed rate as that seems to report, we have a civil service meeting scheduled for tomorrow at five thirty, on which we're looking to hire, um, three more individuals as far as police officers go. The, uh, only thing about the three that I'm looking at hiring, only one of them is certified, and only one of them can start immediately, one has to, but in this two, we've noticed that his previous employer is a certified officer, and the other individual is currently in the military and will might be ETS it until, I think it's like the late March, early April. Although those numbers do look bleak on the personnel front, there is some light in that tunnel, just hope my train.
Anybody got any questions for the chief on his report or anything else you need to ask him that, that we're allowed to talk about in public? Okay. Chief, thank you. Alright, the, the police committee, Alderman Frazier, uh, we didn't, uh,
We didn't meet.
Nothing there?
No.
Uh, and I'll say this at this point, we intend, uh, the department heads, myself, we'd like for, you know, each of the committees to probably have a meeting and maybe visit with, uh, the department heads that they have jurisdiction over and, you know, really, just let them brief you on what we got and what we're doing right now, as well as maybe talk about some issues, so we'll be, be working on that. Fire chief, Chief Boer, you're there. Likewise, they've got your report.
Our monthly report for December, we responded to seventeen calls, four were toned out because the entire department, and we had our regular meeting on the fifth. With twenty-four members present, and our volunteer payroll for the month was eleven seventeen. And we got a pretty uneventful month, thank goodness, so.
Anybody got, uh, anything there they need to ask the chief?
Nothing to ask the chief, I just would like to say that, uh, during the change of the new administration and then always during the last part of the year, and the first part of the year, we have the Municipal League meetings, and everybody is doing everything they've done, but I would just like for each one on the, uh, fire committee, as soon as your, uh, schedule allows, to let me know, and, uh, we'll have a fire committee meeting. And, uh, like the Merce said, we'll get together with the fire department, and also, I would like to discuss our concerns.
Do you have any dates that you would like to share?
I would just, I'm just gonna be open to whatever y'all, what's best for y'all, I'll make it happen.
I'm available.
Okay. Alderman Henderson, you'll, you'll let us know when you wanna do that, we'll be glad to try to organize it for you, as far as.
Hopefully I have, by the end of, let's believe me.
Okay, very good. So you don't have anything else on the committee? Alright, sanitation manager, Mr. Johnson. Actually, he's got both the building official and the sanitation report, so we'll just kinda let you go with both of them here.
Any questions, I'll be glad to, to answer on the sanitation at this time. I do have something I need to discuss with y'all.
Let, let me say something, uh, when talking about sanitation committee, now, of course sanitation has been handling the cleanup projects, the complaints that we get, and, uh, you know, those type of things are following, and the procedures to follow. Uh, I'm gonna have the, uh, manager, we're gonna try to get you up. I'll always kid everybody and say I'm gonna follow what, uh, Alderman Henderson tells me to do, and gonna get a spreadsheet, we're gonna get put together with every, all the complaints we've got pending, what the status of each one of them is, so we can give you that each month. And of course, when it comes time to take action, we'll have them listed on there for, for your action. But I at least wanna keep you informed on what's going on and what state each one, we'll try to start that next month. Because we are dead serious about this cleanup of properties, and, and we've done talked about this a lot, so I'm not gonna belabor the point, but we got a lot of issues to deal with on it, in all areas of town. And, uh, I'm, I'm gonna start talking about this publicly and telling people they need to start getting their places cleaned up if they're in violation, because if we're not, we're gonna get to them eventually. We can't do. We can't do all of it once, but we gonna, we gonna start proceeding. So I just want the council to know we're gonna do that, try to keep you updated every meeting on where we are. Now, Mr. Johnson does have an issue that is, this literally came up on Friday after the agenda meeting was already, there's not any action we gotta take tonight, but it deals with the property on the corner of Main and Cedar Street up here, the old Eddington Building and the associated properties with it. Rob, if you'll take it from there.
Well, actually, I have something in sanitation first.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That we discussed, back in, uh, uh, May the ninth, twenty twenty-two, uh, y'all voted, uh, this is about the new garbage trucks. Y'all accepted a low rate, a low proposal rate of one point nine nine percent on the financing lease of the garbage trucks. They still have not arrived, but I've been informed by the institution that gave us the low bid that the one point nine nine percent is no longer available, which I can understand that. I'm asking y'all, uh, do we resubmit all the way around? Or we stay with the institution and just take their next? I, I don't know, I have to put that in front of y'all to see if we need to advertise it and ask for a re, rebid.
We got time to do this, and we haven't signed any agreements or anything, so.
We, we've committed as far as the trucks, yes.
No, I'm talking about for the financing.
No.
So we're open to do whatever y'all wanna do.
Could change in a week, could be a difference.
Well, this next one will be locked in for the tournament. I heard they, they told me till the trucks came in, because they, they promised to be here in the next six to nine weeks.
We didn't have time to bring this to the committee, it just came up, so I thought we'd just give it to you tonight. Would y'all like us to get new quotes from everybody?
Especially with the interest rate changing, the bid rates and all.
They lock it in.
Well, I tell you what, just for the record, could I get a motion that you instruct us to do that?
A move that we.
Get new quotes. Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry, Alderman Burks Fraser. All right, this is just, we'll just go back to the same people we went to before and, and get an update. All right, wait a minute, let me vote on it first. Question, discussion, all in favor? I see six in favor, none opposed. So you do that, Rob, and then we'll go from there. Now, I'm sorry, I just.
No, you did not, no, that, that was, that's fine.
Are you ready for that other one now?
Uh, whenever y'all.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead and update them on the Eddington Building.
Friday morning, I was, it was brought to my attention that, uh, there was some damage and some debris on the sidewalks up here on the corner of Cedar and, and Main. Uh, the fire chief and myself went down and, and looked it over and found some mortar and, and some stucco that's turned loose from the building. It was landing on the sidewalk and, and the, the front awning and the rear awning of the building had come loose and hanging four foot from the, from the ground. It had come loose about a foot and a half. Uh, on that time, he and I discussed the situation and decided to put the tape up, trying to keep people from getting on the sidewalk, possibly trying to avoid a, an accident.
You referring to the crime tape that's around it?
The fire tape, yes, ma'am. That's all, I mean, that's, that's what we use to try to keep people away. We since then have contacted the owner of the property personally and by letter. And we've also contacted the adjoining property owners, uh, property owner. And we have a scheduled inspection for all four buildings, three and a half buildings, however you wanna look at it, in the morning at, at ten A M. with the state inspector, fire marshal slash, uh, his name is Dennis Free. Uh, we wanna get him involved for his opinion, uh, just to, just to see what kinda shape the buildings are in and get overall view and, and an idea from some, from a different point of view and a different set of eyes that. We inspected it back before the church started back up several months ago. Uh, and, and some of the changes that has happened to the building were not, were not there when we did this inspection on Friday. We went up on top of the roof on the first inspection, and we plan on doing that again tomorrow. And we've got some loose brick and mortar on all the buildings. And we just gotta deal with the owners and see what, see what their plans are and what the state, uh, what they come up with along with what we do, and then we'll go forward on that.
It's including the Hankins Building?
Oh, yes, yes.
And then, and the next one?
Uh, it goes three and a half buildings. I, I, it's, it's the Calvin Building, the Sandwich Shop, and the Hankins Building, up to the, y'all know the old State Farm Building. State Farm Building and Water Office are all not included, it's just.
They've been worked on there.
They've done their preventive maintenance and the others seem to not have, we've got some problems, but.
What, what, if I could add this, Rob, and if I say something wrong, you straighten me out, because he's briefed me in detail on this. And, uh, of course, the reason we went ahead and did what he did and sent the letter because based upon our codes, we can, you know, we visually see something that, that we think is a danger or could be a danger, we notify the people and then, of course, put what precautions we can. Uh, but we did want somebody else to come in, you know, from another level and, and look at it. We are not trying to put these people out of business, out of having their church or, or the restaurant that's there or anything like that. There are a lot of building code issues with those buildings, no question about that. But, you know, they've kinda been there and kinda grandfathered in, a lot of it has been. But when it starts to get to the point that we're concerned, it might fall in, we cannot sit back and, and let that go. So, uh, part, part of the, the letter that Rob sent to the, the owner of the primary building, immediate concern there on the corner was, uh, you tell us what you're gonna do to fix it, or you get us some kinda certified inspector that tells us from their perspective that this is okay. Now, that's not stopping us from calling our own person, and we're not gonna just wait and take their word for it. We get mixed, you know, mixed signals from, which I don't think we will, but if we get mixed signals, then we'll, you know, we'll, we're probably gonna go with state people, to be honest with you, because they're the ones that, with the jurisdiction. If it's a worst-case scenario, we're gonna have to condemn those properties and tell them that they cannot even use them until they're brought up to code. And that means totally brought up to code. So, uh, again, we, we tried to be cautious from the standpoint of not just walking in there saying, you can't come in here no more right that second. And if we thought it was about to fall this afternoon, we'd have done that. But, but we think it's getting to the point that it is extremely dangerous. That's Rob's opinion, I think the fire chief agrees, they looked at it jointly. And, uh, so whatever y'all hear, of course, we've gotten phone calls, what's going on up there, you know? And, and, uh, we, I talked to the owner myself after Rob had already briefed him. We're trying to do this right, but it cannot be left like it is. And it, and we can't wait six months to talk about it. It's gotta be dealt with. Is there, anybody got any questions for Rob or the fire chief? They're both here?
No, you're headed in the right direction, uh, because we definitely don't wanna be like Morton. Where, you know, the situation became catastrophic.
We have a responsibility to the public, it's driving up and down those streets and, and parking vehicles. Uh, by the way, I think we've been to see both banks, have we not? Of course, one of them's across the street to the west, one of them's on the back. We let them know what's going on. Uh, you know, just so they would know what was happening, because they're kind of the most immediate, uh, you know, building business neighbors to them there.
And all the owners, uh, well, the two owners have all been notified. And they're all to be there in the morning, if they can be, but they're supposed to have us access to the building for right of entry in the morning, for the Sandwich Shop, the Hankins Building.
Not trying to bully anybody, not trying to, uh, again, put anybody out of business or anything like that, but this has got to be dealt with, however we have to do it.
You know, we talked about this a couple of years ago as far as trying to make sure the businesses are taking care of their buildings, as well as the, um, different department heads going to look at the buildings as well, you know, as far as code violations. So that's something that we really need to continue on doing.
Questions from the council or other comments? We're not asking you to take any action tonight on anything, uh, but I just thought because the nature of it, we need to tell you all this tonight, this literally happened Friday.
Yeah, we saw the, the crime scene.
If I'd have known this at the agenda meeting, I told you.
The street foreman had, had saw it when they were cleaning up the streets Friday morning, he, he wanted to contact us, which was a good thing. He was there before everybody else was, early in the morning, you know, so. We got, we got down there about eight o'clock, got stuff from that little boy, he got it from us.
This is part of our commitment to keep y'all informed what's going on and to keep the public informed what's going on. Any questions? We'll certainly be back to you just as quick as we know what needs to be done, if anything. Okay? Rob, what else you got there? Anything else?
About, uh, I know Alderman, um, Burks Fraser asked at our agenda meeting, uh, K F C, I, I noticed that they're like digging up, are there some issues?
The digging part down there has to do with the gas running up and down central. Uh, it's not the, anything.
That's preventing them from opening.
No, ma'am, no, and they hadn't been back around, uh, they came around, uh, the state H V A C guy, they're in little contest, I guess you might wanna say, on who's right and who's wrong, and, uh, so that's, that's where we are there, so. He makes all those calls on the vent systems and stuff. But as far as the stuff that we're, we inspect and there are all.
They're good to go.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Charlotte, you're trying to tell me I've skipped something, what?
Firefighter dues, the dues.
The dues for firefighters.
I was waiting to the unfinished business, I saw that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I've never done this before, and I'm trying to get back in the groove of doing it. How much are they? Somebody got that information right there? Chief, what do we need you to approve? The, uh, how much is it? I'm sorry, I didn't catch yet.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven times twenty.
How much?
I think it's seven hundred, seven hundred and twenty dollars.
I would entertain a motion to, this is something we've always done for their benefit.
I make a motion, we give the fire department seven hundred and twenty dollars for the fire dues.
All right.
Second.
And seconded, thank you. I'll try to do better having this stuff in the right order and have it all listed up. Okay, uh, question or discussion on approval of those dues? All in favor, show hands. I see six in favor. Any opposed? We're taking care of it, chief. All right, let's see where we are. It takes care of sanitation and building codes. Uh, street foreman, Mr. Hearns Burger. Good evening.
It's seven, if it's Berg, it's seven times twenty, or that's seven forty?
Seven forty.
Well, I make a amendment on the motion that we make it seven forty instead of seven twenty.
Okay. All right, I'll take, I'll take out amended motion. Is there a second, Alderman Burks Fraser, you did that? All right, just so we're clear, we got it, got to write them out. How much again?
It's seven, if he said thirty-seven times twenty, so that's seven hundred and forty.
Seven hundred and forty, that's what we're gonna show.
Go with my motion.
Any question or discussion? Hands up for those in favor? I see six in favor, none opposed, thank you. All right, Mr. Hearns Burger, I know you've been doing nothing, but go ahead. Uh, he's about wore me out all week, what all he working on himself.
You think it's worn you out? Uh, first part of the, uh, from the last meeting, we've just been digging ditches and doing our usual routine. Uh, the last week has been a nerve-wracking experience. We finally getting to see the light at the end of the tunnel from repairing roadway. We've got, uh, extensive damage from the flooding, but we are slowly but surely getting. We, that's basically about all I, I've got. I've been so busy, we really haven't had, had time to think of nothing else.
What about the update on the bridge down Southworld?
We, it is open today.
Open today?
Open this morning.
Y'all know where he's talking about, right there, close to Stewart Street, where that and, uh, it had some serious damage from.
Serious damage.
Blood, probably some of it already been developing, but they, they think they got it in, you know, safe condition for right now. Maybe some things we gotta do in the future. Alderman Henderson?
I would just wanna ask, will Bradley County be designated a disaster area?
I have not heard from the county judge on that. That's, uh, you know, falls into his bailiwick, but that's a good question. I'll, I will check, because if it is, we wanna make sure we.
It will bring whoever they want.
Yeah, we're included in anything that would need to be done in there for the city. Good, good question, good point.
No, ma'am, I have not heard.
I will be talking to the judge on several things, so, okay? All right, any thing else for the street foreman? Questions, anything that you wanna ask him about? We've got a good system, I think, working here as complaints are called in, either by Alderman or just anybody out there, call the mayor's office. Uh, but he's good, we're writing these up in written form. He's going out, he's, uh, investigating. If he can solve the problem, he's, you know, without, not a major reconstruction, but if he can solve the problem, he's doing it. If he can't, he's coming back and telling me why or what we gotta do, or if it's something we gotta bring to the council to look at doing. And then we're trying to respond back to the property owner, let them know what's going on. Yes, ma'am?
I know that Martin Street is a state highway. You may wanna elaborate on that, because I know I've had a lot of people go, what are you all doing? It's not, it's not, uh.
It's, it's not us, uh, like you said, that's a state highway, I've got no control over that. I have been in contact, uh, various times with the people, that, that, over the million of it. They should be through by the end of this week. Uh, I, I have not had a timeline for them to repay it yet.
It will be repaid, we'll be.
They're moving, they're moving.
They, they really are, they're, they're moving at a good pace. Uh, they're not having many complaints other than the, the traffic cones, but.
Hard to get to school.
Yeah, it's hard to get school in and out of school and places, but that's just, uh, it's part of it, as much as we hate it, that's just what we've got to go through to have a better road.
And they'll appreciate it later.
Yes, ma'am.
But I told them, I said, contact Alderman Mosley.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's what's called throwing another member under the bus, right there is what that is.
She got me big time.
I'm glad to see the work done, I understand it, uh, they are, it is state highway department.
They don't know that, though, they think it's, they think it's us.
They do.
I mean, it would be nice if we could do that.
I wish it'd do that some of our city streets for us, but, uh, it's, uh, you know, one of those things we'll have to deal with. Is blaming it on anything else?
I know it.
More questions for the street foreman? We will be keeping you informed. Street committee chairman, Alderman Mosley, I think you had something you wanted to.
Yes.
Mention?
We rode last Wednesday, I think, I think it was Wednesday, my days run together, looked at streets, we're trying to get a few longer streets so to turn into the state where we can get grit money. And we have picked, I make, I wanna make a motion that we do Bradley from Cook to Beaver, Cook Street Cemetery to Brown, and Fullerton Street from South Main to Charles. These are longer streets, and we want to turn that into the state. These are longer streets, and we want to turn that into the state to see if we can get the state money in the form of a grant, is that right? A grant to pave those streets. Once we get that tended to, then we start on our other streets.
Sir? Okay, I got a motion and a second. And again, just for clarification, of course, you, the council has budgeted some money for street paving, uh, for this year, for two thousand twenty-three. Of course, y'all have also budgeted some of the American Rescue money, a pretty good chunk of that. This would be separate from that. There's a program, state aid program, state overseas. We will have to apply for this money, which we will, but now we know what you want done. We will apply for those streets, and if we can get it good, if we don't, we'll have to just come back and see what else we can do. Okay, any question? All in favor, show of hands please? I see six in favor, none opposed, thank you. Anything else, Alderman Mosley?
No, not right now.
Okay, Alderman Marshall, do you have anything at this point that you need to mention?
No.
About community and economic development? We will be meeting, obviously.
That's correct.
Just a, a, a comment on the community numbers bill on this side. Just like Rob was, uh, alluding to about the old Kentucky Fried Chicken building? The old Ann's Restaurant, which is owned by Anita and James Center? They're running into a lot of problems down there also because of the old building. That's something that's sorely needed in this town. And I wish that, uh, the administration would go by and, and count just see if it was anything we could help them with, because I don't want the business people to get disillusioned with us when they're actually making an effort and have made moves to get loans, to open up something we sorely need. Now, I would like if we extended a hand to them, instead of always running off to out-of-state folks chasing other things when we have people right here in the community that's willing to invest in them.
I'll be glad to check with them, and, uh, just see what the situation is, if there is anything we can do to help.
Appreciate it.
All right. All right, Ways and Means, Alderman Henderson?
No, Billis Miss.
Okay. You put in your time, latter part of that.
Thank goodness.
Don't worry, there'll be more coming at some point. All right, reports, business, boards and commissions, these are our different boards and commissions. Uh, uh, Parks and Recreation, and, uh, thanks Kyle Wagon, our director is here. Kyle, tell them what you got there. I think they probably have a report, Rob.
I get it, my computer will be back next week.
Okay, okay, no report, but.
Um, everything, we had a few toilets, a complex that, in the cold, busted. I took care of their lines, uh, city, uh, the walking track, city park is supposed to be fixed by the end of the week. Few lights out, um, senior citizens taken care of. We're still in the process of getting some bids for the pool. I know we've provided some money for them, not just the plumbing, but the inside couple of things. And, uh, supposed to get with them, and I bet with the mayor and four, he's got two things we're gonna do late. So maybe next month we'll have a little more information on that. We'll wait to talk about that. Balling everything full swing out there, and so we're starting to pick that up.
I know it's kind of been cold, believe it or not, baseball and softball will be going pretty fast now with the complex, so.
In the neighborhood, Burke.
Yeah.
They're out there practicing.
Yes, sir, they're out there.
Any questions for Kyle? Yes ma'am?
I don't have a question for him, but I just want to reiterate the fact that I shared that Community and Economic Development District out of Pine Bluff was going to help us with two grants.
Yes.
Uh, for the, uh, recreation, for the pool in, in particular, one with the Blue and You, and, uh, she was looking at, uh, possibly, uh, one or two other grants as well.
Got you, thanks real good.
She is very good.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna work for them.
Yeah, we, we got, we got a lot of stuff to do in the recreational field as well, so we gotta, uh, one thing, keep up what we got, but also to, you know, hopefully, maybe do some other things as we, as we can, so.
And if we get the grants, that'll free up some money.
Amen, absolutely. Okay, uh, Planning Commission, uh, Jennifer Rodriguez is the chairman, but I don't think they have met. Uh, Aviation Commission, I know they have not, however, we are gonna be scheduling a meeting. Uh, we got some things to talk about, the airport. Water and Sewer Commission, you have their, uh, I guess this is their November, I guess we're, yeah. So there are no, uh, finances and everything. I looked at it, but I don't know really anything else to tell you. Uh, next page is the Housing Authority.
Just mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes ma'am.
Um, I know that at our last council meeting, we voted to allow the water department to utilize the building, so how are we coming with, uh?
Well, you know what, I hadn't heard a word about it, so I need to check on that, I'm sorry. That's, I'm making a note right now. That's gonna have to be some kind of legal, you know, document put together, but they're supposed to be getting that done, so. We are having a staff meeting in the morning, of which I invite their manager to attend. I will find out at that point where we are. Okay, thank you for reminding me of that. Uh, Adam E. is the Housing Authority, I don't have anything there. There, there's minutes, I'm sorry, you do have minutes of their December sixth meeting. Uh, Cultural Center, you've got the December twenty-twenty-two report. And just as an update, uh, not to any action, but so the council knows, I visited today with the superintendent of schools. Of course, we know what they, the school board has said and been saying. Uh, I asked him to, uh, you know, give us something, a, a letter, if you will, as to what their intentions are. And then we need to go back and review the agreement between the two of us, uh, the two cities, which goes way, way back, you know, see if it requires any certain thing. And that I want to know, I have already got people working on looking at grant funding. Uh, not telling you I got anything or anything like that. I'm also getting in the process of trying to figure out what immediately would need to be done to it. Just to stable, like, make sure it's, you know, usable in the future. And then if we have to do something in pieces. What I'm telling you is, we'll be back talking about this, okay? But I've asked the school superintendent to at least give us in writing their intentions. And if that is, we're done with it, we're not gonna do anything with it, uh, we don't want it, then there's a lot of things to be considered, like the property that it's sitting on, the availability of the parking lot, if you do redo the building and make it usable. Can we still, that's just a number of things that would have to be looked at. There is a pretty good voice in the community that I've been receiving that they want us to try to do, you know, repair it, to at least make it usable. If, but that's just something we're gonna have to work on. So that's just an update for you, so you know what's going on, okay? All right, uh, unfinished business, we have nothing, uh, on the agenda for any unfinished business, unless y'all thought of something that I, it's an emergency that we need to tend to.
Well, they called it, I hit the fire duty.
Uh, you were ready to get me on that, we didn't do it, weren't you? Very good. New business, employee suggestions. I think it came up at the agenda meeting, Alderman Henderson, you had had a suggestion. I think Alderman Marshall kind of added to it. Would you briefly tell the council what it is you're suggesting we do?
What I mentioned at the, uh, agenda meeting was the possibility of the administration, uh, establishing, uh, a suggestion box that is locked and that the employees have the opportunity to put, drop in this, uh, blocked, uh, box, uh, suggestions that they feel would, uh, motivate, would be for the advancement of the, uh, city of Warren.
Be something for the employees to utilize.
Yes.
And I think Alderman Marshall, you had kind of added something to that.
That was for the employee recognition.
Employee recognition, you think we could do it with one, one, uh, one box?
No, I think what we had talked about is for the employee recognition, to where a department head.
I got you.
Would recommend someone, and then the city council would decide who we would select at that time.
You wanna do that on some kind of regular time?
We talked about it every three months, didn't we, on a quarterly basis, yes.
Okay. Well, I would, uh, think the appropriate way to do this, of course, well, I could just do it administratively and follow what you're saying, but I think it might be a good idea if y'all would put that in a motion and instruct us to do this. And put something together. All right?
I, I vote that the administration for the City of Warren establish a suggestion box that is locked, that will allow employees to enter their suggestions to be reviewed by the administration and, and council.
And then also put some kind of recognition program together.
And add an employee recognition, uh, function on a quarterly basis.
Okay. That's an appropriate motion. I heard a couple seconds, so, uh, Alderman Marshall, I'll take yours on that. Anybody got any other comments on that?
Well, I, I would like, if, if we do something like this, so, not just to make it a house thing. You know, I have been in organizations that will give you parking spots, or, you know, a few hours or something. I would like for the administration to come up with a few suggestions that we can kind of throw in there, little tidbits.
Okay. We'll give that some thought.
Where would the suggestion likely be?
Well, I gotta give that some thought, I mean, we got people scattered out several places.
Administration established.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, though. I mean, we gotta have it where they all have access, uh, to it, or have more than one, one or the other.
Wouldn't it not be, uh, in the hallway, right before going into the office, you go up there?
Yeah, good, good, good. Yeah, let me, let us talk about that and see if we can figure out what we think would work the best. Good question, though. Good question. Okay, I think we voted on that, or did we? We didn't?
No, we didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry. All in favor of the motion, show of hands. I see six in favor. Thank y'all, none opposed. All right, no other new business announcements. Uh, remind those of you that are attending the two thousand twenty-three Winter Conference Municipal League that starts this week, Wednesday. And again, who else, who we got going to that? Three of you? Okay, just gonna be checking on y'all, make sure you show up, I'll be there.
Don't be taking vacation, George.
Yes, well, Greg, I don't know if they're gonna do that this year. It's always a great idea to usually have lists of different committees and boards and things through the state to put your name on there, so you'd be, would be considered, yeah.
That's at, that's at the, uh, summer conference.
Yeah, that may be for summer, okay. Well, he's talking about it, the Municipal League has all kinds of, uh, advisory boards and, and things and groups that would be interested in that. Now, that will occasionally require you to attend some meetings, usually in Little Rock or somewhere. You need to understand that. But certainly, I think it's appropriate for, if anybody does get appointed to any of those things, we will, you know, certainly support your transportation or whatever else is needed at that time. But just, just remember, it will take some time and, and, uh.
We need a vote.
And I'm currently serving on the, uh, first-class city advisory.
Yeah, that's ki- that's kind of the big dog committee for the first class city.
Well, actually, you know, the executive committee, if you can get there, I, I really enjoy that, that committee. But, but yeah, that is in the summer.
Okay, very good. Uh, I wanna remind everybody, uh, January the sixteenth is, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. And that's a Monday, we will be, uh, the city hall and city services will be closed on that day. Uh, there will not be any garbage pickup for the public, let y'all know that. Uh, that's the only day, and, uh, of course, that doesn't mean the police and the fire department gets to shut down. They have to show up and work, but they do get paid for it, so. Uh, anybody else got any announcements or anything? If we've overlooked, council members, anything you wanna remind everybody of?
Not necessarily for the city business, but about one of our former residents. Alonso Hampton has been given the position of head coach of University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. And I would like to see everybody that could to be able to give him support. So maybe for, finally for a chance, we can get some of our students to be able to get some of those, uh, free scholarship dollars.
I was gonna hit him up for tickets. No, we're very proud of Alonso, that's a very, very valid point. Okay, we got bills, we do have bills to pay, you've got a list of all those.
Make a motion to pay the bill.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, that the bills be paid. Any question on anything? And even if you got one later, uh, feel free to contact us. But, uh, if you vote for this, you are approving them to be paid, so. All those in favor, show of hands? I see six in favor. Our next meetings are scheduled for the agenda meeting on February the ninth at seven AM and Monday the thirteenth for the regular council meeting at five thirty PM. That's, unless you change that, that's what we're setting for.
He said you worked on it.
Okay, let me one final time say thank y'all. Glad to have everybody here and everybody on this council. We got a lot of work to do, a lot of issues to address, and try to do it in a wise manner and a physically responsible manner. We have no choice, we can't, we, we can't print money. All we can do is, is use our resources. Uh, we can borrow a little bit from the local banks from time to time if we need to, but it's even limits on that. So we're gonna do the best we can. Alderman Burke Fraser, did you have a, you look like you.
Now, I'm putting my coat on.
Won't you just make a motion with Jarn?
I'll leave with Jarn.
All in favor, show of hands? Six in favor.